Okay. Okay. Greetings, everyone. It's 5:03. This is the first of three meetings tonight. It's our special meeting to go back over the budget workshop. And how we're gonna go through the meeting tonight, we'll call the meeting to order with the pledge, and then we'll go right into the discussion of what the budget looks like. We did not cover the fee schedule in our last workshop, so we're gonna start there. Our finance director will have some guidance for us along with Chancellor Town Manager. And then we'll go back through the tabs just to make sure we've got everything and any questions that any of the board has regarding any of the budget items. And that should take us to probably about six because we have our second meeting coming up, which is another special meeting. And then our regular meeting's at seven. So, there's no public comments for the 5:00 meeting or the six. Because both of these are special meetings. But if anyone would like to address any of these issues, public comments are in the regular meeting. So, the sign-up forms will be over there on the counter for folks that want to sign up, the public comments in the regular meeting, and they can talk about anything that's on the regular meeting agenda. They can talk about the 5:00 meeting tonight or the six, or all three. So, welcome everybody that's in attendance and those that are viewing us live stream. We're trying to do it both ways. We've got the regular livestream running. We hope it works. And then we've got a backup. Facebook is running as well. So, with that said, I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be singing this and saying this three times. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please concede it. Item one, approval of the agenda or any additions or deletions. Motion's approved. We have a second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, agenda's approved. So, we go right into the discussion about the pledge of allegiance. We'll start off with the fee schedule. Drew, you wanna pick it up from here?
Well, what I'll do is just go over where we finished up at the last meeting real quick.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, ma'am, if I can just jump in really quick. You can just make the announcement about using the microphone?
Yes. Commissioners, tonight, get close to your mic so you can be heard. Get real close to the mic so everybody can hear. Thank you.
Okay, after the last meeting, um, we went through all the capital requests for each of the town departments. And we added, um, twelve thousand for the planning software, sixty-seven hundred dollars for the built-in maintenance. That was the rekey. We add back to Animal Control Department eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We added the genie lift, twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And with adding that back in, it washed because we reduced some, um, equipment lease from Parks and Rec where they don't have to lease one now. Um, we took out the lakeside upgrades at the corner. Um, and then we added the door buzzers for Parks and Rec as well for twelve thousand. And I think that was it. And so, in adding those, what we did was we changed the tax rate from forty-five cents to forty-eight cents. And then we took out the entire amount, the four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand that was gonna come from the cell tower sale. And now we're using fund balance of four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-three-hundred and ARPA funding of six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. So, all those changes have been made, and right now the budget is balanced at forty-eight cents with all of these changes.
Okay? Any questions before we move on to the fee schedule? Question?
Okay, fee schedule starts on page twenty-nine in the front section of the book before we get to the tabs. Um, it's pretty much the same format. It has been in the past. Anything that has changed is highlighted in red. So, if you have any questions or if you wanna take a look at it, it's... All the information's right there.
Okay. We're starting off on page twenty-nine, so if you have a question?
Yeah, I see, um, you're showing that we're charging ten dollars for the Sunshine List to get the agenda and the public announcement. If we're not charging that, why would we still have an R. fee schedule?
If it's something that we're not charging, then it was something that wasn't notified to the finance department. And anything that comes off the fee schedule also has to be approved by the town council. So, if that's something that you want removed, we can do that. If it's a fee that we have that we're just not using, then we can take it off.
I had asked that, and I was still a bit nervous that the Sunshine List isn't being charged. And then when I saw it on there, I thought, why would we have it on there if we're not charging?
From the administrative side, we've never charged. So, the board wants to take a motion to take it off or at least remove it from any changes. Uh, other additional changes you wanna make to the fee schedule, you can do so. We've never actually charged. So, if you wanna take it off.
Actually, it could be something here. There's a note next to it that says, "Fee set by state law." So, we may wanna look into that before we remove it and make sure that that's not something that we have to have listed, whether we actually charge it or not, but we may have to have it listed in our fee schedule. It does say that on here.
Do we know how many? Do we know how many you actually send to? The number?
Um, off the top of my head, I think that we have sixty-two people or people and agencies on our Sunshine List. What the fee schedule is referring to is if somebody, um, actually requested a copy of the Sunshine List. So, it seems like it's something that may be outdated because everything is electronic. But like you said, there may be some statute that, um, ties into that, but it's not one that I'm familiar with. And this seems like it existed for a couple times.
Well, actually, that may be true because, um, I think maybe the word that needs to go in front of the agenda is a printed copy. If we could just add that and just leave it, but it's up to the board. A printed copy of, um...
We can look it up and see if there's any state stipulations that say what has to be or not.
I mean, I don't think we... We don't print any of them. We send everything out on the file.
Yes, everything is sent electronically. And like I said, what this seems like it's referring to is like a list. But when I send out, um, any notifications to the Sunshine List, it's just digitally through EDM. So, no one has asked, um, for a printed copy of the Sunshine List in the year and a half that I've been here. And so, um, it seems like it's something that could be outdated.
I think years ago when it first started, because I remember paying ten dollars one year. And we may have charged, and then maybe another board came that stopped charging. So, maybe that's why.
Whatever the board's pleasure in regards to that, because it doesn't really impact administration. All of our notifications are digital or electronic rather.
Okay. Any other questions about page twenty-nine? The only... I have one question, and I was looking at the food truck permit at twenty-five. Are we thinking about keeping that or increasing that?
That's also on the pledge of the board. We still do have food trucks to do, um, actually possibly submit for a food truck permit. Um, so it's something that I think you should keep the fee schedule in. If you guys want us to increase that to generate more revenue, so that's on the pledge of the board.
Any thoughts from the board about increasing the food truck from twenty-five up or keeping it the same? Mr. Morrison?
Is that per year or per event? Is it per event?
No, it's the annual fee. Um, and it's actually, it should be fifty dollars. Um, but it's an annual fee, uh, for food trucks.
We still... Because the reason why I was asking if it was annual or per event, because, um, I know they still have to be inspected. And then the fire marshal still has to go out.
Yes. And so, if there is an event that we have, we have our own fees that we schedule. We actually, uh, enforce for that event. We actually do go to Great Lakes with the fire department to actually do inspections and things of that nature. These fees are if you are a food truck trying to set up at Walmart, and there's a whole ordinance that governs you have to have a limited support. It has the hours of operation, things of that nature. So, this is the annual fee a food truck would actually pay to operate independently anywhere in Old Mills. If it's an event, you pay that registration fee to the town.
So, it's a thing that's separate?
Yes, that's correct.
So, they can pay... So, the way it's run right now, they can pay twenty-five dollars a day for a year and not have any time to set up or anything?
That, that... No, not anywhere. That ordinance gives them a permit for that location annually. I do think we need to change it to fifty dollars. But it's not a fifty-dollar fee to come run anywhere you want to in the town. You actually have to buy that ordinance. You have to submit a site plan for that piece of property. You have to have an authorization of ownership for that property. It has to be on a commercial property that has established its business. You have to show how you're not taking up parking space. So, the permit fee you pay for, for the annual, only authorizes you to work at that location on an annual basis.
Have we been collecting fees for that? I mean, typically?
Typically, yes. So, typically, most of the trucks you see out operating should be a truck that has a permit with the town. Um, I do think that people need to make sure you don't separate, that you separate it too. You have food trucks like a trucks and stuff. That's a completely separate process. Now, in the event that there's a truck operating somewhere as a sole location, and it's brought to our attention, then code of enforcement, the government, let them know that they do have to go through a process. It's not a very complicated process. It does have regulations, um, that you would have to meet. We don't regulate the health department compliance, but they have to show their health department approval is in the submission, things of that nature. So, if there is a food truck that's operating, you think that it may be operating out of compliance, bring that to our attention so we can tell them about the process.
Chancellor, would this apply to the food truck park that's being built behind it?
Not this way, um, because that is a, what we would consider to be an event permit you get, like, almost like a dirtbag game. And so, when you have, um, the farmers markets that they're back there, they don't have to come in to get a permit every single time for their events. So, there's an overarching event permit type of approval that you can get as well. And that's the, um, beehive falling to that category.
And what's the amount of those permits?
Um, the annual, I have to check the ordinance. Uh, it's not just fifty dollars. I think there's a separate fee, um, for the, um, in the ordinance. I'm not sure. I have to look that up.
So, the food truck permit is fifty. Does the board wanna keep it at fifty or does the board wanna increase it?
I'm gonna take it fifty.
Everybody good with fifty? Okay. All right. Anything else on page twenty-nine? There's a couple, um, items that's in red at the bottom, picnic shelters. That's gonna go up.
Yeah. Um, Chancellor, didn't you say when the incident with, um, the little board, uh, with the reggae weekend or event, didn't you say after that that there would be no more rental out of the parks and...
I said that that was my recommendation. I don't think we actually reprinted. Um, but if myself and Mr. Morrison, if you guys wanted to go with that, we would just... That would be another change that we would take out.
And I thought you said it would be like first come, first served, so...
That is correct. We just never went back and updated the fee schedule without a printed board package or a missed particular budget package. Um, but that was my recommendation. If that's something you guys wanna officially, uh, to make official, then I think you'd just take that off of the fee schedule.
Yeah, I know you said it was raised ten dollars, uh, higher for each one of those for this budget.
Yeah, it was. It went from fifty to sixty for the deposit and forty-five to fifty-five per hour.
Didn't, um, did Grace go to the Parks and Recreation and talk with you, um, Lamarcos? What was decided there or didn't you make a decision?
I think she came to talk to him, and at the time, it was when, um, we were still basically getting a legal implementation. So, he sent her to meet. So, I don't think they actually came up with a final decision. Final decision was in my recommendation that, just to basically make it so that, um, it would address the entire issue in my recommendation that you don't have any more rentals inside of Reed's Journey.
Anything else?
Then let's just make it easy and just remove Reed's Journey from that, that parentheses. That way, there is no constraining of, um, just take it off.
Is that out of the board?
And they'll keep Reed's Journey, so I don't want to use that.
All of that's located within Reed's Journey. Now, I wanna make sure this does not apply to any other parks, just the Reed's Journey portion of it.
So, we're taking out Reed's Journey by the, uh, the, uh, parentheses. So, you're leaving in Municipal Park, Broward Park, and Edharing Park. Is that correct? Picnic Shelter. Yes, we're just taking out Reed's Journey. Yes, that's all we're taking out.
That's correct. You're still leaving in Municipal Park, Broward Park, and Edharing Park. That's correct.
Everybody good with that? All right. Page thirty. Sebo at the lake. Eighty-five, rental per hour of seventy. Everybody good with that? Just wanna make sure we go back through the fee schedule. All right. There's a recreation center rental fees. There's a couple increases there. Including the gym. Can you go forward? Go forward on page thirty? Page thirty-one?
Um, excuse me, ma'am, before you move on, um, I was able to look into it about the Sunshine List. And so, according to NCGS one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-two, um, it allows a public body to charge for a Sunshine List, but it's not a requirement. So, if you guys wanna take that out, you can.
Take it out? Everybody good with taking it out? If you don't, take it out. All right, back to page thirty. We're good. Page thirty-one? Any changes are already in red. Page thirty-two?
Um, so for the summer camp, um, now, I know we were having some issues with that about having, um, even our own staff trying to get onto it. Is there something we can do to, um... Because I know you have like an hour early registration to make sure residents get in first kind of thing?
Um, I think you're talking about how quickly, I don't know, it closed. The sobering conversation is the next facility. Um, we had forty. We, I think, correct for all, Mr. Morrison, we increased the capacity from thirty kids to forty kids. And, um, what happened is you have to pay for the entire summer. So, you're paying about a thousand dollars a level about at once. Forty slots give them thirty minutes flat. And so, I think, correct for all, Mr. Morrison, we have forty additional on the waitlist that were conversation about, could you open it up an hour early for residents versus non-residents? But I think the bigger picture is that this is also a conversation about capacity and more. You can run an entire new, entire separate summer camp and fully staffed summer camp program with their forty additional people on the waitlist.
So, the conversation was also, um, I didn't get a chance to update anybody since the last Parks and Recreation Board meeting. But, um, they recommend that perhaps we open up for residents a day early and then allow for everybody else. So, but I leave that up to you all. If y'all want, that's your pleasure. To open it up for res... Well, get residents the opportunity to register first day and then open up everybody on the second day. Eight hours.
I do have a question. Do you have a lot of non-residents?
Yes, a lot.
And so, they're taking up the class?
Yeah, and so, that's the complaint we were getting, that, um, a lot of non-residents, even though it is ten dollars or so more, um, most of our participants are non-residents. And so, the residents, well, there's not enough slots for the residents. So, hence the twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hour, opening up for residents, twenty-four hour, one day?
And correct for all, I don't think you would change the fee schedule. You still allow for a lower reduced rate for, um, residents. I think the policy would be for next year's summer camp that Parks and Rec would open up there. I don't think you would have to change the fee schedule.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other comments? Turn to page, page thirty-two. Municipal Park Common Areas. There's some increases there. Okay. Page thirty-three. Some changes in public works. No issues. We'll move on to page thirty-six. There's some changes on this page and on page thirty-seven. And that's all the changes on the fee schedule. And it's closed, uh, the fee schedule in the budget. All right. Okay. Like a question? Is there any questions that any of the board members would like to raise or issue going through any of the tabs? The goal for our workshop is to address these questions now, flush them out, discuss them, because when we get to the regular meeting at seven, it should just be an action item.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
What is it, Commissioner Lake?
This is not directly involved with the budget, but I had called this week wanting to know about what we were doing for the Fourth of July.
I don't know. Okay, well, Lamarcos is here, so he's probably got the schedule for the Fourth of July. Or Chancellor can address it either way.
Either one. Um, let me pull this up. For the Fourth of July festivities on the twenty-eighth, you have the Independence Day Cook-Off Celebration Saturday, June twenty-eighth, five p.m. to nine-thirty p.m. at Municipal Park. That is where you'll have your fireworks that will start at nine. Um, on the second of July, from eleven a.m. to one p.m., you have the Independence Day Luncheon Cookout. Um, and then on July fourth at ten a.m., you have the Independence Day Parade. Though all three of those are in the manager's report, and they've been circulating on our government page as well as the Parks and Recreation page for about, uh, the last one.
Just to add to that, so the twenty-eighth is a cook-off, but also that's gonna be the day that we have all of the entertainment, um, vendors, um, games, things of that nature. So, the twenty-eighth is not only the day for the fireworks, but everything that we'll usually have for the Fourth of July, including the, um, the bands, things of that nature, the twenty-eighth. And then the fourth will have the parade, just similar last year.
Okay, we're gonna have a flyer we're doing?
That's a flyer.
Yeah, it currently being circulated.
I haven't been around as much as I used to.
Under manager's report.
Okay, okay, okay. Lamarcos, all of that's gonna be held back here with the exception of the parade?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. In this budget, there is no funding for playground equipment at Edharing Park. I would like to ask the board to consider repurposing some ARPA money in the amount of, Lamarcos, what, sixty-five? Sixty-five thousand? For Edharing Park?
Yes.
For just the playground equipment? To repurpose that out of our Parks and Rec ARPA funding to at least start with playground equipment at Edharing Park.
Ma'am, I do have a question. I wanna make sure that we are still on track of working and doing some other things that we had planned on doing with that ARPA money. Like baseball fields and things like that, because I'm afraid that we're gonna keep pulling from this ARPA money and we're not gonna have any money to do some of the things that we originally agreed and designated some of that money for.
Okay, just give you a quick update on the ARPA funds within the time. If I have it in here. Okay.
Drew's gonna go over it all.
Currently, for the ARPA funds, we have five hundred dollars or five hundred thousand for the police real-time crime, um, stuff. That is ongoing, and we pay a certain amount each year. So, we've got one more payment that will be, uh, coming up next year. Um, that's still happening. That's not changing. The police and fire radios. The only thing we're changing in that for this budget is we're adding the fire radios debt payment, one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred. So, we're adding to that amount. Uh, the current amount that's in there, we've already paid for those radios, so that's already happened. Excuse me. We have already moved some money for the antenna on the cell tower, the forty-eight thousand. That's already happened. That's already being paid for. Um, that's still, you know, allocated for that. The street improvements, we've got one-point-five-million-five-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for street improvement. That's still there. That's not being touched. Uh, Woodland Hills has eight-hundred thousand. Excuse me. That's still there. The Lake Park parking lot, forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred dollars is still there. The Chapel parking lot, sixty-one thousand, that's already been spent. That's completed. The splash pad, water and sewer, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's already been completed. The all-inclusive playground, four-two-hundred thousand, that's already been completed. The basketball court, sixty-four thousand, that's been completed. The preliminary mount for the golf fields, Golf U, sixty-six thousand. That portion of it has been completed. And the operating transfer that we sent out for four-hundred-and-five-thousand to, I believe that was Heritage Park, that has been completed. So, most of the funds that are still out there that have not been spent yet are for the street improvement projects and the Parks and Rec projects. The senior center has four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand and the, where is it? The tennis, here it is, tennis courts and pickleball, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand. The only funds we're talking about using... The only funds we're talking about using right now with this budget was the amount for the rec center and the tennis and pickleball courts, because the money has to be spent by December of two thousand twenty-seven. If we don't think we're gonna spend that money by that time, we need to spend it on something else. So that's what we're looking at reallocating. Part of that, just rounding off, about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we're using, some of that for this year's budget, which will leave about two hundred ninety thousand still for Parks and Rec. So if the mayor or y'all as a group want to use sixty-five thousand for Edharing Park, we would use it out of that two hundred and ninety. We're not gonna move it from the streets or any of those, it would kind of stay in Parks and Rec.
And still have a four hundred and sixty-three thousand for the senior center?
No. No, that would be pretty much used up, because we're allocating six hundred and sixty thousand of ARPA funds for this budget. So if you add the senior center, rec center, and the tennis pickleball courts, both of those numbers together, that's roughly your nine hundred and fifty thousand. We've got six hundred and sixty that we're using for this budget, that leaves two ninety of those two. It would be real. And you would just say two hundred and ninety thousand would be for Parks and Rec.
But we're taking sixty-five K. out of that, right?
That's what the mayor brought up.
So you've got about two thirty, uh, two, 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 two twenty-five left for everything else. Thing what Dr. McCray is saying is, when you initially talked about touching ARPA, um, initially ARPA was supposed to be used for the baseball fields and the rec center, and so, um, she had some concerns about making sure if we're moving money, we're making sure that we're planning to reallocate that at the time that we do decide to move forward with those projects.
Where that would come from would be if we did the, um, the bond. If we do the bond, it would kind of use the bond funds for this instead of the ARPA funds for that.
Mayor Proton, nine fifty was what the two amounts were, and to balance this budget, to balance this budget, we're gonna be reallocating a little over six hundred thousand out of those two, those negative fund lines.
Right. So it would happen if this budget's approved later this evening, then on the early meetings of the next budget year, you would get a budget amendment reallocating these funds into ARPA fund itself, saying this much is going to the general fund as a transfer, the rest of these, we would, uh, take out the rec center line, the tennis pickleball court line, and just designate it Parks and Recreation.
If we were to, to look at approving the sixty-five thousand request, that would still leave, what, two thirty?
Uh, two twenty-five, yeah.
That would still leave.
And if y'all make that change tonight, that wouldn't necessarily change this budget here, I would do it with that budget limit.
To just be included with reallocation.
Right, it'd be part of that budget limit, y'all get early next budget year.
Ma'am?
Mr. Marley?
Couple things, I kind of want to know what kind of usage that park gets. And sixty, what, sixty, sixty-five, is that what she said?
Uh, that's what Lamarcus was saying, sixty-five thousand for the new playground equipment.
Is that just for playground equipment, or is that turnkey, is that installation? Everything, or we just buying equipment to sit aside? What, what is that?
Lamarcus, after, you know, you can add a bit to it.
So for the type of playground that I have in mind, based on historic, it'd be, it'd be the cost of equipment and the install, so we, we usually do a turnkey. Um, and we work with a playground manufacturer, and that's the cost for the purchase and install.
If I could add, um, uh, Mr. Morrison, I guess what Marley is asking, have you guys identified the total amount of improvements to Edharing Park? Can you get all that N L C?
The total improvements, based on the size of the park and, and historic data, um, most recently what we did for phase two of, um, the Reece Journey Playground, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per person, so that's, you know, all, all of the amenities that the surveys revealed that the community wanted. The swings, that's upgrades and improvements to picnic shelter, that's a site package, um, improvement including benches, new picnic tables, water fountains, et cetera, but, um, the sixty-five thousand that, um, is on the table now is strictly for playground equipment. Um, I, I will say that the playground equipment currently there is outdated, it, it really should be, it should have been torn down years ago. Um, and, and that's one of the things that the, um, the people surveyed said, the reason why nobody's using it because it's kind of like obsolete, you know, the size of it and, and, and the amount of damage that's been done to it.
I, I know it's gonna sound terrible when I say this, and, 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 and we want to try to do what the citizens say they want, uh, we, we, we try, I think this board does a good job of trying to give to them. I kind of agree with Dr. McCray, I want to make sure that I keep spending and spending. I mean, I came into this, um, meeting the night, um, thinking we had the budget pretty much nailed down, and we keep making these changes. And I want to make sure this is, this is exactly what we need, just like I said, I, I don't, I don't visit that park. My kids are grown, they're grown, I understand, people have families, young kids, they want to use the park, I'm all for that, um, for anything that we can do for them. But does this park have the usage or the numbers there that says, hey, we've got to do this this year? I mean, I, I know it's a, I know it's a wishness that we did a something against the citizens to then fit in, and like I said, we want to make sure we try to do everything that citizens wants to do, that's what we're here for, but, um, you know, we keep making changes to this budget, and we've had a, a hard enough time getting the word around with forty-eight percent.
So right now, right now, we don't have the usage, but then the surveys and talking to people during the event we had at the park revealed that if they had better equipment, that families would feel better about coming to the park, uh, but because the, um, the equipment's, you know, uh, damage is so outdated, we don't have the usage, because there's really no reason for the family, the playground equipment there's been there for years, um, you know, several years, and, um, and so we're told that the reason why we don't visit the park is because of the condition of, of the equipment.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Swallow?
Um, I think the one big concern I have is, especially when we install the new playground equipment here at Municipal Field, um, is the security issue, and we're gonna have cameras, because what's the point of, you know, especially that's not even near our main hub essentially of the, where Town Hall is, so, you know, the concern of trying to have it installed and people destroying it, like they were destroying it when we were setting up Reece Journey. So, you know, I, I think, I think we should wait for this, because unless we get cameras in there, we, we can't have eyes on it while it's being installed especially. So, I mean, it's, it may be a few more years, I, I hate to say that, but I'd rather have security in place before we install expensive equipment, especially brand-new expensive equipment.
Okay, good point. I just brought it up as a discussion item, that's kind of what the workshop is, is whatever items were left off, I agree with Commissioner Marley, that, uh, we should nail it on the budget, for sure. But it was just a discussion item about Edharing Park, that's all. We, we had a cookout out there, we had some surveys, we had a lot of community interest, uh, but we just don't have the money in the budget to, uh, do what we'd really like to do. And, and I agree with Commissioner Swallow that, you know, if you put new equipment out there and there's no way to monitor it or secure it, um, something might happen to it. Commissioner McCray?
When I was at the, I thought that the park looked great, y'all done a good job with it. I just think if you put some seesaws, maybe a slide or two, you know, but this is just too much money, I think, to go into one park where we have other neighborhood parks, and we can't afford to put that kind of money in all those neighborhood parks. I just think if we could just add, you know, uh, the mayor was saying change, keep the frame, but change the swings, I think it hurt somebody back. Uh, put a slide or two and seesaws in, a sandbox, I think that would satisfy everybody, I really do.
Thank you for your comment, I, I think that's what I'm representing, seesaws are no longer legal for us.
Oh, they are, dude.
Yeah, but, but we have, they, they have something similar, so what we're seesawed, yeah, they've taken all the fun stuff we grew up with, they take it that way, even the springs, um, what you call springs, can't use those anymore, so all the fun stuff that I grew up on, not allowed anymore, but they, but they have some, they have some equipment now.
Yeah. But not real expensive.
Right.
Uh, stuff I think the kids would enjoy it just as much, and go and then the, um, picnic shelter, I don't know where, yeah, I thought it looked pretty good, I, maybe y'all know the places that it's, uh, uh, rotting out or whatever, but I didn't see that. Paint the table, the table, the tables look fine under there. I think there's a lot of just cosmetic things that we could do to that to make it look better, but overall, y'all went down a good job with that park from what I saw there that day.
Okay.
And Lamarcus, we, we certainly value your opinion, and we believe if you tell us that it needs to be replaced, it needs to be replaced, but I'm just, I'll do what the board wants to do, if the majority of the board wants to do that, I'm, I'm fine with it either way, but I, I just, we've had a tough time, it's true, just, you know, I think we just need to kind of hold the line out there.
I, I do have one more question, but at some point, if we're not on target for designating this ARPA money, we can come back and say, okay, we want to go ahead and designate this funding, funding for, um, Edharing Park, correct? Yeah, because it, because there's other needs that sometimes come up during a year, one-time things that we may need to ARPA money for too.
Right, and that's what we've done in the past, it is still earning interest, not as much as it was, because we've spent the, uh, amount there, and it's dropped a lot, but, uh, the money is still earning interest, uh, that has been outspent. And at any time of the year, if something comes up, we can still reallocate what's already been done, but it has to be done through a budget limit, and we all have to approve it.
I, I would just be more than, well, maybe getting through the year to make sure nothing else comes up that's like, I'm obviously seeing something else that we needed for, and then maybe closer towards the end of the next fiscal year, if we have the extra funding there, we don't need to designate anything else, we can go in there.
I, I've been trying to put it on the list of priorities, Commissioner.
Wester Lake?
I don't think there's anyone sitting on this board that doesn't want to see our Parks and Recreation performance thrive. So as fast as we can get through this, uh, so we have a target, uh, I believe it's better off with me, and I think that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
All right, before we adjourn, is there any other comments or discussion about our F Y twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed town operating budget?
I, I wouldn't make a suggestion, um, I know we're gonna go officially at our seven o'clock meeting, but, uh, if the, if the town manages the town, if we can put something out, copy in other, other municipalities of highlighting some of the things that we put into this budget.
You have to be right now.
Okay, thank you, I think that would be really good, and I think like there's been like some, you know, people are feeling like we just keep adding stuff and spending, there's been a lot of cuts to this budget, we have not just been adding and adding things, so I just think something that we can put out there for our citizens, uh, like somebody called me this morning, and I said, do you feel like with the fourteen positions that you all asked for?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah, cut.
So I don't think people are being, are, are really being educated on that part, so something that just.
You know, that's a good point, because what you're doing is adding an extra element. Most of the municipalities are just saying this is a, uh, twenty-two million dollar operating budget, if we actually put this amount to public safety, we put this amount to Parks and Rec. What you're saying is to be transparent and let people know what we actually had to make the tough decision not to be able to fund, you're putting out the stuff we did do, because this is a public safety, this is an operations budget, but it would be much more clear to people the things that we wanted to actually add and we actually couldn't do it, because we did have to come to a position where we did hold the line on increasing that, so I could put that together, sure.
Ma'am? I just want to add, I said it at the last meeting, that I, and I want people to realize when it's safe stuff, that we almost sent this year, this first year I've been on the board, that this has ever happened, it's been brought to us, that we almost sent a twenty-plus-year employee to the house. And I want that to sink in with people, to understand that we almost had to cut a twenty-plus-year employee's position over this budget. And, and I just want people to think about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Putting this budget together has not been an easy endeavor, not at all. A lot of the proposed department requests in this budget will go unfunded this year, because we just couldn't balance everything. But Commissioner Marley's right, is exactly right. That's where the proposed budget started, was cutting valued, long-term employees to balance a budget. I commend our department heads and our staff and this board for presenting this budget where we are tonight for action at the seven o'clock Reptile meeting. Hasn't been easy, it's been difficult because of what, of the sales tax loss that we had to absorb, and we had to work around it, it was non-negotiable, and that limited a lot of the funding. Also, we had to take funding from other areas to balance this budget, like six hundred some thousand from ARPA funding that we had already designated for other recreational, Parks and recreational use to balance this, and then also, we had to move money out of the general fund to balance this budget, to get it right where it, where it is now. So yes.
And ma'am, if I could add, I'd just like to read the departments. These are all departments that we cut positions from that were requested. Administration, Human Resources, Code Enforcement, Planning, Fleet Maintenance for Parks and for Public Works. We added two positions for Fire, for Police, we cut five requests for Officer. Fire Department and Parks and Rec. We cut that many positions from every single department we have, and so that is what I think Mayor Proton is talking about, even with the forty-eight cent tax increase, these are the departments, and these are very key positions, when we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about, uh, policing, um, the, the, the hill, per, per se, we cut the position to do that. Um, and so people have to understand, even with this budget we have, every one of these departments, these are major needs that need to be addressed in terms of us staying on course with a growing town, and so that's the part that we have to make sure people are aware of, even with the stuff we weren't able to actually find.
With all the equipment that was added to the budget, that equipment has to be maintained and operated by people.